Tonight, our invocation is offered by Pastor Tim Stroop. Did I say that correctly? And then if you'll remain standing, the pledge will be led by Commissioner Tarassiano.
Let's pray. Dear only Father, we are here tonight to give honor to you at the beginning of this meeting because we know you are concerned about even what takes place here. You're God of order and part of this commission is to bring order to our city, keep things in working order and things done according to law. So, Lord, I pray, I thank you for every person that's on this commission and the gifts and talents you've enabled them. And I pray, Lord, that you just actually go beyond those gifts and give them divine wisdom, whether the decisions tonight are small or complicated. We're asking for your help here tonight. And in all things, Lord God, we just want to give you honor and praise and thank you for blessing our city of Lancaster. We ask this in the name of Jesus Christ, my risen Lord and Savior. Amen.
Amen.
Please join in acknowledging our great country.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. May the roll call please.
Commissioner Diana Cook, absent. Commissioner Cassandra Harvey, absent. Raj Malley.
Here.
Fabian Tarassiano.
Here.
Vice Chair Brandy Hall.
Here.
Chairman James Vos.
Here.
We have a call.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Public business from the floor. If an individual is unable to stay through the entire meeting, we offer a couple of minutes at this time to provide input to the commission. Do we have any early speakers, Mr. Lutke?
None that have stated, Mr. Chairman.
All right, thank you. Then any person who would like to address the commission on any agenda item is requested to complete a speaker's card for the recording secretary, identify the agenda item you'd like to discuss. Each person will be given the opportunity to address the planning commission at the time the item is discussed by the commission. Speaker cards are available at the rear of the chamber. Individual speakers would then be limited to three minutes each. All our public hearings tonight are uncontested, however, the members may inquire of staff and may ask for the applicant to address this as necessary. Tonight, our first item is a presentation on a proposed LED ordinance. The presenters tonight are Ms. Swan, Mr. Noga, and Mr. Zanger. Good evening and welcome.
Good evening, Chairman Vos, Vice Chair Hall, commissioners. My name is Heather Swan and, as you know, we are on track to become the first net zero energy city in the country. We are already over 50 percent of the way towards our goal and, well, excuse me, Sarah, Phase One goal, which would be our peak energy usage. In line with these goals, the mayor and council has tasked us with developing an LED lighting ordinance. The ordinance we present to you tonight is for your review and we welcome your feedback in this collaborative process. The ordinance we're proposing would be related to all new construction from the ground up, would require the use of high efficacy lighting without the use of lighting control, would not contain mercury in excess of .5 milligrams, and must be Energy Star rated with a minimum of 90 CRI for interior lighting. Over the life of an LED bulb, we know that it will provide cost savings due to that long life. However, not only that, we will also be able to produce less waste and substantially cut down on the amount of pollution that could be generated from any of those bulbs that are also containing mercury. For the life of one LED bulb, you would essentially be foregoing 36 other incandescent bulbs. When evaluating the life of that LED bulb, we say 46 years because a typical bulb that you can buy on the shelf right now would last you approximately 43,000 hours. I would probably never have to change that light bulb again. And most, actually, most of us probably never would have to change it again for the rest of our lives. But the cost to operate that one bulb over the next 46 years for an LED would be approximately $65. To operate one equivalent CFL bulb over the same amount of time, you'd be looking at $97. But to operate an incandescent bulb, it'd be almost 400. So we can see that there's still substantial cost savings when it comes just to the electrical cost of operating an LED bulb. Now, when we look at an average home example for installing LED lights in a brand-new, newly constructed home, we're looking at approximately 30 sockets on average that would be required for LED installations. And based on the research that we have done, the same bulbs that you can buy off the shelf right now with the 43,000-hour life cycle, would cost approximately $420 to install those light bulbs. We're looking at an average energy savings of almost 60 percent when you just replace the lighting in your home. You're looking at a 60 percent reduction in the kilowatt-hours used every year. When you extrapolate that out based on a Tier One baseline rate from Edison, you're looking at an immediate savings of $78 a year. Now, we all know there's very few people that fall into Tier One baseline rates. Most homes in the Antelope Valley are up in Tier Three. And when you look at a Tier Three, you're looking at almost $162 of savings a year for the average home at an average baseline. But what does that ultimately cost the homeowner? Because we know that $400 is added on to the cost of the home. But what would that look like in your mortgage? Taking an example of an average mortgage, we're looking at 30 years at 4.5 percent interest, costing approximately $25 a year extra on your mortgage, and you'd begin saving a minimum of $78 a year. Now, $400 may be a little conservative, maybe a little low. So we thought, what if it weren't, were to increase? What if, what if we were very wrong in those estimates and it could be almost $1,000 in extra cost? You're still looking at only approximately $61 in added mortgage costs. With a minimum of $78 a year in immediate first-year savings, you're still beginning to save immediately. So we present to you tonight the ordinance for your review and feedback, and we welcome any questions that you may have as well.
Thank you. There may be some. Just so the folks understand, last, this commission meets twice a month. Last week, we met in our regular review session where staff presents the proposed agenda and answers our individual questions. We do not deliberate, however. We received approximately an hour presentation on this subject. However, some of the information you provided this evening is new. So, anyone have any comments or questions?
On your 45-year lifespan of the bulb, is that 100 percent efficiency? Or does the LED degrade? And when it does degrade, how much light is it putting out after half of its life?
No, I don't have the numbers of degradation off the top of my head. I'd be happy to look into that. But I do know that as an LED degrades over time, it is a very, very slow dimming, if you will. It's not like a light bulb you see now where, when it's done, it's done and it turns off. LEDs will begin to dim over their lifetime. And the research that we have done, because we're also looking into a possible conversion of streetlights to LEDs, when you begin to dim an LED light, we have seen studies where you can dim it all the way up to 40 percent of its actual brightness and not visibly see a difference. So by the time they begin to dim, the little bit over time, it's estimated that you would still have a substantial amount of light coming out of that bulb even after all those years.
Do you anticipate the cost of the bulbs will drop as we ramp up production of these? Because we are going to have a, an end of incandescent bulbs coming out, so...
I expect they would continue to drop naturally as the market demand increases. You see production increase and they find better and faster and more efficient ways to produce these products, just as we did in the solar PV market. We've seen prices drop substantially, even on LED light bulbs. A bulb like this, if you were to buy it a year ago, I know Tim has installed many in his own home, paid probably $25, $26 per bulb at that time. Now, this bulb that we're using for these examples, we found on the shelf at Costco and cost approximately $14.
We, at the meeting last week on Monday, we talked to KB Home Builder, Tom De Prima, and he says that he offers it as an option. So basically, with this ordinance, we're going to take away the option and just make it a, they don't have any choice now?
So become a standard for all new homes. Not actually all new, all new buildings.
Even industrial?
Correct. This does encompass industrial and commercial buildings.
He said his option was $1,100 of extra cost to put in there.
It is my understanding that that number is the price to the home buyer.
Yeah, that's what they, he was charged them when he starts figuring out the options.
I think it included the fixture as well, which a standard fixture doesn't necessarily accept the bulb without certain retrofit, right?
It depends on what kind of fixture we may be talking about. The LED bulbs that we have surveyed are the screw-in type, so Title 24 still requires a pin bulb in certain areas of the home, such as the kitchen. We are not looking to alter, and of course, we can't alter any of the state code. We are looking at all of the fixtures where you may happen to screw in an incandescent or CFL bulb, and we're asking that they screw in an LED bulb instead.
Any consideration given when you suggest a 45-year life, if I heard you correctly?
Correct. The 43,000 hours, when we look at studies of approximately three, three hours a day, we're looking at approximately 46 years.
So if you cut that in half, it would be 23 years. The average person...
If you used your, if you used your lighting.
Yeah, and the average person resides in their home, what, a maximum of five years? Isn't that about right figure? About five years on a new, on a, before they turn them over? And then periodically, folks tend to remodel certain portions of their home, oftentimes kitchens and bathrooms and that sort of stuff.
The ordinance does not require the LED installation on any kind of remodel or tenant improvement. It only requires that an existing building be retrofitted. I can pull the exact wording for you.
Fifty percent, yeah.
It's actually if anything is stated in housing, state housing law, federal law or regulation, or anywhere else in the Lancaster municipal code. So if maybe a building had been condemned and was being redone, it would be, have to be, under whatever circumstances those might be, it would have to be brought up to our current code. But if someone wanted to remodel their bathroom or their kitchen or their living room...
So this proposed ordinance is a, according to staff reports, a reach, a reaching code change. In other words, it's, we're, the city would be out in front of the marketplace with this ordinance if, if in fact it was adopted as recommended?
That's correct. The CEC will be putting forth their 2016 code, which this will be in line with the 2016 code. The fact that the city of Lancaster would be implementing those requirements ahead of schedule is what the CEC calls reach code.
The analysis you folks have done have been strictly on residential. What consideration, if any, has been given to the industrial and commercial marketplace? And, and those venues that produce the sales tax revenue to this community? What impact, would, would this have on, on those new construction projects, commercial, for instance, like a large shopping center, big box shoes or whatever?
The numbers that we've been able to analyze off of the homes is because we have a rather small pool to analyze. One home is generally like the next. We've taken a survey of active trucks in the city and taken an average out of those homes, out of real homes. Businesses, as you're all aware, can vary wildly between a large manufacturing facility, a warehouse, a small retail shop, a restaurant. The business owners that we have spoken with and the research that we have done with the CEC staff has, and even on our own, here at City Hall, we've looked at our own usage. We've found that it's very difficult to put together a financial analysis when those types of buildings and types of uses vary as much as they do. But you can look at things like, here at the city, we replaced approximately 3,000 fluorescent tubes a year. Now, those fluorescent tubes probably cost 30 cents realistically. They're incredibly cheap. But it takes a full-time employee to get all of those bulbs changed every year. The cost of that employee is our real cost of those bulbs. You also have manufacturing facilities or other commercial buildings going in that as they build from the ground up, they're, they're factoring a different quality of light, a different spread of light, and may need less fixtures. The difference in the fixtures may also help offset any costs that there is on a higher-priced fixture, fixture, excuse me. We don't have solid base to look at.
So then why would you recommend commercial, industrial, if you don't have solid information?
We're looking at it because we know that in the end, it will save them kilowatt-hours per year, and that equates to money savings, financial savings.
And that's your estimate based on your belief rather than actual fact?
The energy savings is a fact, and we can equate that based on our tariff. I can absolutely say that.
So in a commercial setting, in a commercial setting, Ms. Swan, you actually have fixtureization to compare to, you actually have costs of those fixtures and all the rest of it to do a comparative analysis similar to what you did in residential?
On the commercial, we have not compared the fixtures because we don't have a...
That's my point. That's my point. If you're bringing a proposed ordinance forward to impact segments of our, of our revenue-generating portion, residential projects do not generate revenue. They cost city government, right? They cost us, there's a cost of doing business with the city for residential development. But commercial projects, particularly retail projects, generate revenue typically for the city and keeps the system going.
Certainly.
So it seemed to me one would want to have a very thorough grounding in the actual benefits of recommending a ordinance like this impacting those elements of our revenue stream.
We'd be happy to survey that in, in greater depth. We welcome that input as to what industries or sectors might be included in that and, and any advice that you may have for that.
This is an ordinance that's technically, technically not under our code reviews typically. However, it does impact the future use of property within our city, that's for sure. All new construction impacts, that's for sure. It's been suggested by some that maybe a couple of members of the commission would be interested in spending some time interacting with staff and other interested community members to come up with some recommendations to come back to this commission so that we could consider before we'd even suggest to the city council adoption of this ordinance.
We would...
That make sense to you?
Absolutely. We would look forward to working with the commission on that.
Okay.
We may have the opportunity to make something even greater.
Yeah.
More expansive or more all-encompassing.
Yeah, it couldn't be more than three members, otherwise we'd be required to have a notice meeting. So at least, maybe, maybe our volunteers sometime between now and the close of meeting tonight will probably discuss it and try to decide who wants to volunteer, if anyone. We're missing a couple of members here tonight who may be interested as well. So, I mean, this is very comprehensive and, and high impact on the residential market. You know, given the numbers you've suggested, it sounds good on the surface. The reality of a 45-year life, you never have to change, you'll never have to change a light bulb again. Got that part. Some people aren't going to live in their home for 45 years. Some people might not even live 45 years.
That's true.
So sometimes, our government, when it does get ahead of itself, doesn't necessarily think it all the way through. So I'm not suggesting that, that we haven't thought it all the way through, but maybe there's more to it than what we've seen so far.
We welcome additional eyes to help us look at this.
Appreciate that. Thank you. Anything else?
I'd like to volunteer for that.
Good man. Anyone else?
I would like to volunteer for that, too.
Burning desires here.
Okay. It's exciting things we're talking about.
Is it possible that we could come up with numbers like return on investment per square foot and like the industrial setting? Is that a possibility that can be done?
I think so.
Because you're going to have, you're going to have a big box retailer, you're going to have warehouses, and you're going to have restaurants, and they have all different types of lighting requirements, so we would be able to, to show the different cost savings for each one?
Absolutely. I think that there's many different ways to look at it, and I think that's a great idea.
Sounds like an interesting project.
Yeah, it does, yeah. Well, a lot of your industrial and commercial uses use daylighting during the day and limit their use of burning electricity to light a facility with skylights and that type of thing, particularly in industrial uses where little, if any, powered light fixtures are in operation.
Well, Costco has the daylighting, but then they have sensors, and so when the cloud cover comes over, the lights pop on. So you have a hard time telling when it trades from one to the other. So there are some complexities that will have to be looked at.
I would imagine folks in the industry in that arena would be more than willing to share their information. I would hope that they would. Certainly, the residential folks, I know Mr. De Prima has been very candid about his opinion about these things, and I'm sure he'd be more than happy to continue to give his input, so...
Now, fill that third volunteer seat if you're not going to.
Well, that's fine. I'm more than happy to let all three of you or suggest all three of you to be involved. And I'm not sure, you know, scheduling and so forth, if you can all participate. And, you know, city staff is normally eight thirty to six or eight to five or whichever hour operation they happen to be on, four tens or whatever they're working. So most of the, most of the meetings would have to probably be during the daytime or late afternoon, I would, I would imagine.
We'd be, we'd be happy to work with your schedules. It's not going to be an issue.
All right, very good. All right, well, thank you very much. We appreciate your, your report tonight. Any further questions from any of you? Thank you.
Thank you.
So the assignment for the three folks who have volunteered would be, what, 90 days max, would you guess? Is that the same reason with the all?
In three months, we should be able to come up with everything that you asked for.
Should be, don't you think? If you need more time, you can ask for it. But I would hope within 90 days, so that would put us the middle of October, meeting in October, maybe? Are you right?
Yes. You would have to, at least come up with the, the first thing would be like a list of what we would want, and then we could shoot for that. So probably we'd have to, maybe you could text me or, or let me know the, the number one list of stuff, and then we'll have like that as an outline and we'll fill it in after that.
Apparently, there, apparently there are other ordinances out there that, that address, potentially address some of these issues, and I would expect staff would be more than willing to provide that information to the group, whatever the group consists of. You guys and staff and other interested parties in the community, building industry association, most likely.
Are those other ordinances...
Ms. Brown's nodding her head out there, so I would imagine that would be of interest as well. And other, maybe other trade associations. There may well be some of the trade associ, some of the trade associations that represent electricians and who knows what, so... Well, good. Thank you all for doing, for agreeing to do that.
You're welcome.
All right. Next item is, I'm sorry, I didn't ask, are there any speakers on this presentation? All right. Next item is consent calendar, which is approval of the minutes of regular meeting June 16, 2014. Have a motion, please.
I make a motion that we approved minutes from regular meeting of June 16, 2014.
Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. Please vote.
Sorry, I forgot they had that.
Thank you. Next item is continued public hearing on transit-oriented development TOD zones. We've, this is our third, maybe, public hearing on this matter, so without objection, the public hearing is, is a continued public hearing and is open. Those who are interested in giving testimony on this would be requested to please fill out a speaker's card. And if during our deliberation, you find you'd like to say something, don't be bashful and fill out a card and bring it up to Mr. Lutke. The recommendation tonight is to receive public testimony on transit-oriented development zones and provide comment, questions, and direction to staff. Again, we had some brief discussions on this matter individually with staff over the last several weeks. We have received from the consultant, Mr. Sergeant Planning, Sergeant Town Planning, responses to our meeting last week and the, and the questions we raised and the proposed actions to be included within the recommended revision. So if anyone has anything further to add, jump right in there.
I made enough comments in last month's meeting that I feel like I covered it in great detail.
Okay. You may, you may have an epiphany here before we're done. Do you have any comments? Anyone? All right, I have a... Pardon?
No comments. I think it's an exciting project.
We talked about Section 17 dot 06 dot 05-0, which limits the sighting of bail bonds, pawn shops, that sort of thing within the TO, in certain areas of the TOD zone. But there was no mention of thrift stores. And I, I shared with the members at our meeting last week, I had occasion to visit a community to the north who, who have a very robust downtown, or have had a very robust downtown redevelopment area, similar to our downtown redevelopment area. And however, they have a plethora of thrift stores. So the client, the mix of clientele on the street is... So, the mix of clientele on the street is quite challenging, at least from my point of view. Now, I don't know how we address it, or even if we will, but I bring it forward and would like to hear some responses to staff. Obviously, the existing, what would be existing nonconforming, which such as a bail bond or a pawn shop, would be an existing nonconformance, and as long as they stayed in operation, they would continue in operation. But new couldn't come in under this proposed regulation, that's correct.
Did you want to, did you have any comment before I talk?
Good evening, turbos. Are you asking that we would exclude that whole section, or just add it to the process for a director's review, or?
Well, I'm not sure where it goes or if it goes. I mean, in the TOD area, there are certainly very worthwhile agencies that are providing service to this community and to those less fortunate in our community. I wouldn't want to give anyone the impression that I'm opposed to that service. However, the sighting of that type of facility is a concern to me. And if it's ingrained within a typical retail setting, as opposed to, I'm not as familiar with the nomenclature on the proposed zoning as I should be, obviously, but in areas that may be more suitable, rather than the direct retail, the retail mix with retail shops and restaurants and that type of thing, as opposed, I would prefer that things like pawn shops and bail bonds and thrift stores not be included in those types of uses. And if that's the way this is written, then I'm comfortable with it.
We can look at that, and then also if you wanted to put any sort of distance separation requirements, or if you're just looking at having them not be in a retail kind of format, or?
The other, the other portion of, or there's another large portion of the service to the community, the less fortunate members of our community, who provide daily meals and other, you know, medical services, referral services, those kinds of necessary services within, throughout the community, but primarily east of the railroad tracks between I and J, for the most part. I certainly wouldn't want to limit that opportunity, but again, I'm not sure how to deal with it.
Yeah, we do have a more of an industrial section, like the transition, so maybe that's more appropriate in some of those areas than just the ones that are more mixed-use commercial.
Mm-hmm. Possibly.
Would a used bookstore be considered a thrift store?
I think a used bookstore is a used bookstore.
Is it the type of buildings that we're gonna put in there would lend themselves to small little operations like that?
Yeah, they would.
Antique store could almost be a thrift store.
But I think we know what a thrift store is when we see one. Particularly if it was next to the Greyhound bus station and like that.
Vice Chairman Hall, though, makes a really good point. Having gone personally through an issue about a thrift store versus, you know, consignment store versus whatever, the definitions can get a little tricky. And I think one of the challenges that you do get in situations like this is, are you better off with vacancy? Are you better off with something? And those are, I don't think there's an easy answer all the time with those. The fact is that in some areas, and I would say probably at least for some foreseeable future in parts of these areas, you're going to have certain types of uses that are gonna want to go there because they can get a lot of space for a reasonably priced amount of And I think it gets a little hard sometimes to distinguish completely. What I would suggest is that you can allow the use, but allow it subject to a director's review, which means that they aren't allowed by right. The city does have the right to exclude the use if that particular use looks like it may be some kind of a problem. And I'll tell you that in the past, as a staff, we've used, we had in one case where there was one use that wanted to relocate from one place to another. We looked at how their current operation was done and ultimately determined that we weren't going to approve that one, mainly because of the way that they managed the current facility where they were located. It had a lot to do with how they dealt, because people forever believe that if it's a thrift store, they must accept donations. And so, you'd find all kinds of stuff around, and there are places that have that problem, but they're pretty good about picking it up and dealing with it. This place just didn't happen to be. So, you start looking and saying, well, if they're not gonna operate well here, how are they gonna operate well there? And it can be on a case-by-case basis. On the other hand, as a couple of you probably know, I happened to be in San Francisco last week, and their thrift stores carry stuff that's probably better than IKEA carries. So, you know, it's...
Yeah, up north, you know, thrift stores, even down in Hollywood, they're calling them now vintage stores.
Careful what you're talking about, vintage, careful.
Vintage.
So, sometimes, sometimes okay, sometimes not. Some of the branded, for lack of a better term, you look at Goodwill or some of those, actually operate pretty well within a retail environment. But there are places that don't. And the way that you deal with these, you can either put them all through a conditional use permit, or you can put them through some kind of a staff-level review and approval, which is what I would recommend. And within the administration of the code, they can appeal it if it's denied.
One of the other reasons I raise a concern, the community I was in has paid parking with solar-powered paid parking meters. Am I saying that right? Paid parking kiosks. And the receipt you receive talks about the reason that they charge for parking and what they use the money for, to keep the landscaping up, to keep the sidewalks clean, and so forth. I was somewhat surprised that every street I walked on, it would have, would appear to me that it had been some time since the sidewalks had been cleaned, steam cleaned properly, similar to what we recently went through on the boulevard, and ultimately the Downtown Business Association got together and figured out the solution. I'm concerned that we need to address that in this, that potential impact in this ordinance. I don't know if it's appropriate in the TOD, or how you deal with that. But we missed it in the downtown specific plan, and the marketplace adjusted to it. So, I don't know how, if we've thought about that.
Yeah, it's kind of hard to embody within an ordinance. The downtown specific plan doesn't address it either. However, I know that in the community discussions that went on as part of the development of the downtown plan, the consultants mentioned several times that ultimately, the city needed to try to move the downtown towards a property-based improvement district. And they pointed out that most successful downtowns have that component to them, and what makes that better, they said, than simply a business-based one, where you're simply charging the business owners, not the property owners, is that you need to have the property owners essentially invested into the success of the downtown area, and that has that approach. I'm sorry to hear that wherever you were, they're apparently not using their parking meter revenue as effectively as they could. There are cities that do it very well. Pasadena is probably the best example. Their downtown improvements and their old-town security and all of that is paid for in large part by the revenue that's generated from their parking facilities and their parking meters, and they make a point of that.
And their five-story garages, yeah.
Very true. But if you don't meter the on-street parking to start with, your five-story garages don't work that well. I won't take the time to obviously call this up now, but if you have time, there's a very good, about eight-minute video that's on the internet. Donald Shoup, who's the parking guru, professor at UCLA, an economics professor, actually, will tell you why Old Town Pasadena took the right path and compares it to the disaster in Westwood, and he believes that the parking meter decision was really, really good. He's kind of an entertaining guy. You know, he said when they first put the meters in Pasadena, they were concerned because the, you know, the pawn shop owner was concerned that nobody would then want to park in front of his store because they'd have to pay to do that. So, but he noted that it was part of the renaissance of Pasadena's situation. But it's hard to call out an inordinance. It really is something where you have to get some success in the business community, and then they really have to take a look at whether they themselves are going to become responsible for kind of the environment that they're helping create.
On page eleven, under C, it identifies C as conditional use, and I'm assuming that means conditional use permit at the bottom of the page. The legend at the bottom of the page on page eleven.
On bottom, page eleven, the C represents conditional use permit.
Okay. Because everywhere in the writing, it just calls conditional use, and I don't think we have that in the enabling ordinance. It's a conditional use permit is the way it's called out, I think, not...
Right, instead of conditional use, it is conditional use permit.
The personal service, let's see, tobacco and tattoo and pawn shops and thrift stores are okay, but adult-only, check cashing, payday loans and bail bonds are excluded. I read this right, on page twelve.
You're saying that the bail bonds is excluded? Yeah, it's not in. Right, the prohibited uses, check cashing, pay loans, bail bonds, heavy industrial, adult-only businesses, yeah, they're all prohibited.
Mm-hmm.
How would it work for like the bail bonds people that are already in the zone, if they decided to sell, or?
Those would be considered legal nonconforming.
Legal nonconforming? So, if they sell, they can still maintain it as a bail bond, or?
That's my understanding, unless they were doing some significant changes or additions or something like that.
Or close for what, ninety days, is it, or it's a hundred and twenty?
We can make it for that, yeah. Ninety days if they lapse for ninety days.
Maybe we'd make it thirty, fifteen. Has to be reasonable, I know. Thirty sounds mighty reasonable to me.
Yeah, probably need to pick a, I think the normal code, or the rest of the city code, is two years. The ninety-day one is for alcohol. I'm not sure if you'd get much progress beyond that.
I'm not convinced, but I'd beg rest to our, my friends here on the dais. What do you think? Ninety days? This will go along with Mr. Ludiki this one time. Strike that. We always go along with everything you suggest, almost always. Where did I read it? Hold on, let me see if I found it. The encroachment permit, no, it's table two-point-four, I'm sorry. An encroachment permit is required into the public right-of-way under table two-point-four, and that would be things like awnings and balconies and those sorts of things?
Yes, actually, what we're trying to do there, there are certain circumstances where the city isn't going to require a formal encroachment permit, but this really stems from some of our experience in downtown as the street became successful and people began to push outdoor dining and other kinds of things out into what you might normally consider the public right-of-way. We wanted to make sure that there's some provision that calls out that the city does have the right to request an encroachment permit or issue one for those kinds of situations. And our primary concerns really are ADA access and, quite frankly, just a safety issue. And there have been a few situations downtown where that has been a little bit of a difficult call. So, I think what we wanted to do is make sure that we have that authority, because that is the public's right-of-way.
Between Dayton, Ehrlich, for instance?
There are some circumstances, yes.
Page forty-one, and I'm not sure if this was correct or not, the photo identifier of the fire department connection called out as a backfog per gunner. Now, maybe the backfog per gunner is hiding behind the bush, I don't know. What do you think? No, you had it.
Well, it might be behind the bush, but if it is, it's really well screened.
And that was the purpose of the photo, is to demonstrate the screening, right?
Success.
Can't beat, you can't beat success, that's for sure.
You hit a hummingbird?
I did. Oh, gosh. On page eighty-six, the sidewalk signage, we touched on this last time, I think, last meeting, because of the potential impacts on access, Title twenty-four access, you know, the ability of pedestrians to maneuver and that sort of stuff. And the fact that there are more, there are occasion when you see multiple signs for individual businesses. Now, does this limit one sign per business?
If it doesn't, it should. I don't know, Chris can probably fill this in.
I believe it's one sign per frontage, so if you're on a corner, you can have multiple, two signs.
Yeah, I think we were trying, Chris, did we pull over, the city has, in accordance, well, in coordination with the downtown or Boulevard Association, created some guidelines for freestanding signage downtown. I don't know if these are the same as those... I don't know if these are the same as those.
Yeah, they actually are the exact same ones.
Okay.
It has been incorporated.
We were trying to pull over some consistency, I think, on that.
And the street networks specifically calls out Sierra Highway on page 94. That's a major change to the existing right-of-way conditions now. And I recall from some of the community meetings, there were a number of business owner representatives that attended that meeting, those meetings, I should say. Has this been vetted with the folks along Sierra Highway?
I know it's been discussed on a couple of occasions with owners of an auto parts store, and I think there are a couple of others. It really speaks to how the city is looking to try to manage the street. Sierra Highway essentially between J and Avenue I. We see it as a place where we can attempt to try to slow the traffic a little bit. And I know in discussions with a couple of the business owners that I had, they admitted also that their customers feel a little unsafe with the speed of the traffic. Their main concern is they didn't want people to feel impeded in getting to their business. But at the same time, they did admit that even their customers who park on the street are a little leery about opening the car doors because of the speed of the traffic. We did talk with our city engineer, our traffic people did look at this. The amount of traffic that's carried on Sierra Highway really does not justify four lanes in that area. Two would handle it quite well. And if it can assist in slowing it down, you might not only get a reduction in some of the sphere, you might now get a situation where people might feel safe enough to actually park on the other side of the street and cross over to the business. Kind of some of the same effect that we saw once we did the redesign on the Boulevard. It used to be very rare for people to actually cross the Boulevard to the other side of the street. While this certainly wouldn't be the same exact design, it would help facilitate, I think, a lot of that same approach. And I think business owners, when they understand that, would actually find a greater opportunity than they may have now for some of that to occur.
Okay. And the figure F, which is the bike lane, is on the east side of Sierra? That's the proposed location of it?
Yeah, the, these, I believe, the, all of the cross-sections of the streets are not requirements, they're suggestions for how these could happen. What that's really showing is something that we don't really have in our city right now, but our engineering staff is considering. It's referred to as a cycle track, which is actually, if you, for lack of a better term, a two-way bike lane. So, they're not for certain that they would use it in this situation, but they felt it might be a good opportunity because these aren't required sections merely suggested that it's a good opportunity to sort of describe how that would occur.
So there's no parking on that side of the street?
No, you wouldn't have that with the cycle track.
So they couldn't very well cross the crossroad, could they?
No.
That was why I asked.
On page 134, we talk about the mullions on the window frames. You know, the standard in the residential industry is white, right? This is suggesting that the window frame mullions match the architectural treatment of the building, color and so forth. Would that extend to the door frames as well possibly, or shouldn't it?
I don't know. That's a question that I hadn't really considered.
Those can be rather dramatic.
True.
You talking about the window frame?
The frame, yeah. And just the way it's demonstrated here, you have a white window frame, you know, vinyl, you know, vinyl coated, aluminum window or whatever, dual glazed, that's boxed in with, you know, one by three or one by four of a, you know, of a deep dark color and.
Yeah.
I mean, it makes the windows pop, but it's not very architecturally pleasing, aesthetically pleasing, I guess.
Vinyl-built windows, I think white's the only color they come in.
Back to the LED bulb philosophy, I guess, never mind, I'll be quiet. That'd be worth looking at, I think, on what's available in the industry and costs and that sort of stuff.
Yeah, my understanding is the white is standard, and if you want the ones with color, it's more of a custom kind of request.
Yeah. I've replaced, yeah, I've replaced vinyl and got, you know, contrasting color to the exterior of the building.
Vinyl?
Vinyl, yeah. I don't recall if it was, if there was a price point difference, so I don't recall But white is standard. It's kind of like the vinyl fencing. I don't know. Looks very attractive when you mix it with all the earth tone colors in a subdivision. That white vinyl yard fencing really makes it attractive. I'm being facetious over here. Okay. The, on page 146, the last comment I have. Under administrative and enforcement, the last sentence under B. Any permit, license or approval issued that is in conflict with requirements of downtown Lancaster's specific plan shall be considered null and void. So, all these standards and so forth, it's been cross-referenced to the point where we're not shooting ourselves in the foot somewhere?
As is the case with most form-based codes, there's a certain amount of flexibility that's written into the administration of it. That's the same case that we've got in the downtown form-based code right now. We can probably clarify the language, but the intent is that the mechanisms for granting, I don't want to say an exception, but for granting modifications and so forth is considered a part of that overall code. But we can modify the language to clarify that.
Well, it gives a director under the next section under deviations. It gives, it gives minor, defines what the deviations are and what a director might consider. And what the findings of approval are and so forth. I mean, it's not a lot of wiggle room in it. Some.
A little, yeah.
If I might interrupt, Chairman, I would be happy to, and in fact, would encourage Mr. Ludicki to sit with me and go over the enforcement provisions. I think it's a good idea to look at it strictly from an enforcement perspective. I'm not sure that the design, Mr. Sargent and so forth, really has that in mind as he's putting his plan together. So I think that that might be helpful.
Since you spend a lot of time in the enforcement arena, good idea. That's all I have. Does anyone else have anything? So the recommendation is to give you input, which we've done. Two members aren't here this evening, and I'm not sure what other input they may have. So maybe it's appropriate to continue this matter till the next meeting. Any objections there?
No.
No objection, okay. All right.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, new public hearings. The first is conditional use permit 12-06, which is an extension for AV Christian Center. So if the, if there are no objections, a public hearing is open on this matter. We have a waiver signed by the applicant's representative. Does anyone care to hear a staff report on this item? No? All right then, public hearing is open. Do we have any speakers? Have no speakers?
I have no cards, Mr. Chairman.
All right then. Anyone want to speak on this? All right. So without objection, the public hearing is closed, and we'll consider a motion on the recommendation.
I make a motion that we grant a one-year extension to August 20th, 2015, based on the findings contained in the staff report and all other previously approved conditions.
Thank you. Second that? Thank you. Further comments, questions? I saw it, it was 4-0.
Motion, just for a fleeting moment, we'll wait till it's on the screen. Motion passes 4-0.
All right. Next item is conditional use permit number 14-01. This is a public hearing, so without objection, a public hearing is open. The applicant is the Dominion Center. This is a conditional use permit to allow a church in an existing building. We have received a uncontested letter written by the applicant. So, does anyone have a burning desire to hear a staff report on this? None? All right. Do we have any speakers on this one?
I have no cards, Mr. Chairman.
All right then. Anyone care to speak on this? No? All right then. So without objection, a public hearing is closed, and we'll consider a motion on conditional use permit 14-01.
I move that we adopt resolution number 14-08 approving conditional use permit number 14-01.
Thank you. Second?
Second.
Thank you. It's been moved and seconded. Any further discussion?
Motion passes 4-0.
Thank you. The next item is also a public hearing. This is a continued public, well, isn't this a continued public hearing? Haven't we had this before?
No, it's not. You had it on your agenda before, but it was really to provide feedback and input to us.
Ah, okay. So this is a new public hearing then on consideration of revisions to the municipal code concerning regulations of carnivals and circuses. So without objection, the public hearing is open. We have a rather lengthy recommendation. This is a city-sponsored applicant. So, shall we have a brief staff report on this?
Yes, Mr. Chairman and members of the commission. Over the last couple of months, we've been working towards the preparation of a draft ordinance that would change the manner in which the city regulates carnivals and related activities. As a result of the input that was provided to us, the Assistant City Attorney put together a draft ordinance that essentially would create within the city's code a restriction, a prohibition, I think is the better word, on carnivals and those types of related activities. And then certain areas are carved out as exemptions to that prohibition. And those were much of the discussion that we had at your last meeting to try to define what those types of exemptions should be, the situations under which carnival or similar activity should be allowed to occur within the city. So that's the basic structure of the ordinance that you have before you. We feel that it does capture what the intent of the commission was. Staff is comfortable with the current direction and form of that ordinance. We would recommend to you ultimately that you make a recommendation to the city council of approval. But obviously, as the commission, you have the opportunity to have another review of it and provide any additional changes or input to it that you feel would be appropriate. Both the Assistant City Attorney and I would be more than happy to answer any questions that you might have about any specific provisions contained in the draft ordinance.
Thank you. For the record, and I should have mentioned this earlier, but we've received some modifications to the, first of all, the staff report on page one. There's a portion of a sentence missing in our original publication. That's been verified or changed. And under, on page three of the proposed ordinance, 9-46-040, numbers four and five add additional language appended to it. So we all have copies of that. And that's your recommendation of the. All right, any discussion from anyone or any questions or comments anyone wants to bring forward? Go ahead.
Well, with the revision and the prohibition, you have enough flexibility in this for, you know, the schools and churches and the groups?
Yes, as it's currently drafted, the typical types of activities that we talked about, school carnival or school event or church festival of some kind, would be permitted under the way that the ordinance is drafted. The other thing that I think is very good in the way that it is currently drafted is that anybody who feels that they were unfairly denied by the words of the ordinance or that they ought to be allowed to conduct a carnival, has the ability to make that request. And the planning commission essentially sits as the final deciding body of that. So ultimately, there's a remedy to someone who feels they've been unfairly affected by this, but they would take their taste essentially to you as the commission to make that. From the staff's position, we think this is a very forcible ordinance. We think it's the proper way to go, and it certainly addresses the issues that we've had concerns with for the last few years in regards to these types of activities.
All right, thank you.
Can I ask a question?
Sure.
On the definition of carnival, it's pretty straightforward here. But I had a scene from the freeway that the Harley-Davidson store has entertainment, barbecue, and would that fall under the definition of carnival or is that?
No, not really. We do allow, under other provisions of our code, what are called parking lot events or special sales or things of that type. And that's really if the Harley-Davidson or there's some kind of any event of that type that's conducted, that's what they would make their request under. Those are the types of activities that are really clearly incidental and are usually, you know, sales promotion types of things. I don't want to claim that Harley-Davidson does that to promote sales, I'm sure, but, you know, that's really the distinguishing factor here. you know, that's really the distinguishing factor here. It's different than a situation where someone that's really unrelated to any of the businesses in a shopping center goes to the center owner and says, "I want to lease three acres of your parking lot, and I'm going to unload my carnival there for four days, and I'll pay you X amount, and then when I'm done, I'm gone." That's where we've been having the concerns and the problems.
Okay. And I liked what you did on four and five. On page three, I had the concern about the carnival people being, because some of the original language we looked at actually banned certain people that had certain background checks that didn't pan out. And I think that that was a proper way of handling it. I appreciate that.
It's on page five, the proposed ordinance on sections five, six, and seven. It strikes all the languages currently in the code and inserts that one sentence.
That is correct. Those sections referenced the kinds of things that could and couldn't be done, and that's all taken care of in this chapter, so.
Okay. Thank you. All right, anything further from anyone? No? All right then. There's no public here to give us public testimony, so we have no speakers cards. So it would be appropriate to close a public hearing without objection and consider a motion on this matter. Whoever'd like to read it.
I move that we approve resolution number 14-09 recommending to the city council approval of an ordinance amending Title IX of the Lancaster Municipal Code by adding Chapter 9.46 and amending Title 17 of the Lancaster Municipal Code by amending Section 17.08.050, 17.10.050, 17.12.050, 17.16.060, and 17.20.340 relating to the regulation of carnivals and other temporary outdoor entertainment events.
Second that? Thank you. I think you said on the third, 17.12.070, I think that's what I understood you to say, right?
I meant to say what was written here.
That's what you said. That's what I thought you said, yeah. Okay. Any further discussion? Please vote.
Motion passes 4-0.
All right, Director's announcement.
Yes, Mr. Chairman. The first is really a question to the commission. We took up the ordinance which you've just made a recommendation on several months ago. But back in March, we had begun discussion of a temporary sign banner ordinance, and I think at that time, the commission said they wanted some more time to kind of go around, take a look, and see where everything was at. And from a staff perspective, we have been putting a lot of our effort into the TOD zones and so forth. But now with the carnival ordinance kind of off of your dais, so to speak, and now to the city council, my question is, did you want to put back on the agenda, at least for discussion purposes, the temporary sign and banner provisions for your August meeting?
It's your pleasure, folks.
Can we wait until after we finish the LED?
I suppose we could. Since, I mean, since I'm not on that task force, I have no problem with bringing the sign matter forward, although I won't be in attendance in August. So maybe September would be as soon as we have...
Do you want to look at September?
Hmm?
I said, if you want to, obviously, you don't have to take any action, but I'm just trying to decide if you're going to be at a point you want to discuss it further. And if that's the case, it does really need to be on the agenda.
Well, I think it needs to come forward. I mean, it's been March, it's, you know, six months here. We need to move it along and get it...
Yeah, I'd like to see that move forward for discussion. I've received a couple of phone calls from businesses off the 10th Street West corridor that are kind of hidden, that had temporary signage up, and I guess they got their hands slapped by code enforcement.
I think September would be reasonable.
At least for discussion and, you know...
Okay.
If you, you know, if you see temporary signs that, when you're around, snap a few photos with your cellphone and download them to thumb drive or somewhere or another to get them to staff so you can maybe share rather than circulate through the whole group.
Should we email them to Joy?
I guess, but I think that the city's system doesn't allow much, very large attachments to come through, and photos tend to get blocked, don't they?
Yeah, even sending things out to people can be difficult, which I've had media inquiries for pictures and things. It can be sometimes difficult to get it out, but...
Could we set up a Shutterfly or a PhotoBucket account?
I can set up a dot box.
Okay. And is it going to be for September, September meeting?
I'll be more than happy to put it on September.
At least, I mean, at least have a discussion of what our current temporary sign ordinance structure is, what may be appropriate and what may not be appropriate, what individual concerns might be. That be good? And you'll let the other members know who aren't here tonight what we're proposing to do? All right. Anything else, Mr. Ludicki?
No, that's my only comment at this point.
All right. For the commission's agenda? Anything? I just want to thank you, the three of you, for agreeing to work on that LED project.
That'd be interesting. I'd like to kind of see, the reason why I volunteered on the commercial side, kind of get a mix from small, medium, and larger buildings, just to see how that would pencil out.
Right.
As far as cost and savings.
Yeah, you know, it may turn out that the recommendation ultimately could be, will only deal with residential and take up the commercial industrial later. I mean, there's not enough data out there other than extrapolating potential cost savings based on the energy use of a light bulb, or whatever you call them. Anyway, incandescent light bulb as opposed to an LED bulb. You know, that's a stretch for me, but you guys do it. I'll stay out of the way. But it is, I agree, it is a challenge because of there's such a diverse type of building out there other than single-family residential or apartments and that sort of stuff. I mean, if I understood the staff correctly, they want to, you know, paint everybody with the same, every entity with the same brush. And that may be just dandy. I don't know. I would suspect so, too. Yeah. All right, no one here from the public to speak on public business from the floor, so we would stand adjourned then to our special meeting for agenda review on Monday, August 11, 2014, at 5:30 p.m. here at the Public Safety Conference Room in City Hall. Thank you all.